Generally, you're absent. Generally, you're absent. Four point oh, student representation. We have none tonight. Five point oh, agenda additions and deletions.
Mr. Chair, I have one deletion. Twelve point three, I was hoping to go through that with the board in a study session, and I didn't make the list. We didn't have enough time anyway, so.
When was that twelve?
Those are the first three of the policies.
Okay.
We're deleting that.
And then, so we're deleting twelve point three, and then under consent, consent, Agenda B, set for resignation of basketball coach, and then consent to Agenda C, we're approving a head volleyball coach.
Consent to Agenda B. What was the other one?
Consent to Agenda C, is hire a head volleyball coach.
Okay. So, can I get a motion to approve the additions? B is to the resignation of the basketball coach, and C, hire a volleyball coach.
Head volleyball coach.
Head volleyball coach.
Are we moving the consent agenda right now, or just adding it to the agenda?
We're adding it to the consent agenda.
I would just like the hiring of the head volleyball coach separate for discussion.
That would be ten point oh.
You put it in ten point oh.
Okay, so we're gonna take, we're gonna take, we're gonna remove consent agenda item C, and we're going to move it.
The first one we had.
Yeah, we have to, we have to.
Put it on.
Yeah, we take it off. Okay, so I need a motion to approve the consent agenda as originally stated.
I would like to remove from the consent agenda the approving meeting minutes. Is it time to do that?
I think we have to be at the consent agenda. We're still at additions and deletions.
I mean, excuse me. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
What are we doing?
We're okay.
Who's down first?
Five point oh. Agenda additions and deletions. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the additions as?
And deletion.
Huh?
And deletion.
And deletions as presented.
I'll move. I will support.
So, support or move by Sather, support by Lotteger. All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Okay, visitor input?
No.
No visitor input. Okay, seven point oh, approved or?
Technically already approved.
Okay, all right, all right. All right. It's been a long day for me. Okay, so we approve the agenda, correct? Okay. Eight point oh, approve the Treasury report for the month of March and the first check writing of April.
For the month of March is included in your package. Total receipts of one million fifty-five thousand two hundred and fifty-eight dollars seventy-one cents. Disbursements of four hundred and seventy-five thousand two dollars and eight cents. Payrolls, seven hundred and fifty-six thousand six hundred and fifty dollars and forty-seven cents. Checking balances, the miners bank, three million three hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-four cents. First National Bank of Gilbert, two million fifty-nine thousand two hundred and nine dollars and sixty cents. First check writing for the month of April is included in your package. Total disbursements of one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars and sixty-six cents.
Can I get a motion to approve the Treasury report as presented, please?
I'll move.
I'll second. Move by Sather, approved by Addy. Any discussion? All in favor? I oppose. Motion carries. Consent agenda, nine point oh.
I would like to remove, under A, number two, the minutes of the regular meeting of Monday, March 25th.
Do you want to remove them completely?
No, remove to be put in its separate, yep, under two.
What, is there a problem with them?
Yes, I want to have discussion on something on them, yes.
Okay, and so?
Is that just the regular meeting, or the study session also?
Just the regular meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and we were also moving C down to ten point oh.
Yep.
So, nine point oh, the consent agenda as presented with item, or the A, number two, moved to ten point oh, and item C moved to ten point oh. Can I get a motion on the consent agenda to approve tho, that with those items removed?
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, boy.
Item agenda item. I will support. For one and three with two being moved.
So, motion by Sather.
I will support.
Motion by Director Sather, support by Director Lotteger. Any discussion?
I just, and I hate to do this, but, so one and three are on the agenda. Two has been removed. Now, how about B and C?
B is, B is?
C is on, in ten point oh.
B is on the agenda, C is dropped out.
Yes, okay. Thank you, I left off B.
Okay. All in favor? I. Opposed? Motion carries. Ten, ten point oh, items removed from consent agenda. We have item A from, removed from the consent agenda for discussion, item A, number two, and number C, which was added in the agenda additions.
So, what I remove first? Are we going with what I removed first?
Okay, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to get, we're going to get a motion to approve, we're gonna approve.
No, you can just.
Items removed?
Just go like ten point one.
Okay, all right, ten point one, okay.
Minutes of the regular meeting, have a discussion.
Okay, ten point one, item two, A two, you can?
I would just like to point out that under the board meeting minutes of March 25th, under new business, it states that the board discussed recording study sessions and committee meetings. I made a motion, and the motion was that we would record all regular meetings, but leave the study sessions up to the discretion of the superintendent and the board chair based on importance, being that we have Justine here doing the notes, and we have video recording. It just seems like we're duplicating services. And again, you know, it was passed, the motion was passed five to two with Directors Genellini and Sarkin opposed because they, they preferred to, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but you had preferred to have all of the sessions recorded. And my, the reason why I made the motion, the way I made the motion was, where, where do you draw the line? Because we have different committees. We have the safety committee, we have the athletic committees. Are we recording all of those then too? Or, and are we taking minutes on them? It just, it's, the motion that I made was not an intention to leave it at the discretion of superintendent and yourself to record everything. It was what you deemed a priority for recording. And I, and I get it, Bill. I understand what you're saying, because I, I do want to get information out there too, but we're duplicating. You know, we're having Justine here recording minutes, we have record, you know, we're video recording, and we're duplicating those services, and the discussion was that that isn't typically done in other school boards, and yes, maybe some, but not a lot, that both are recorded. So, I just wanted, again, it should be a board decision if we're going to record all of them. My motion, which it doesn't state in here, it just says leave the recording of study sessions to the discretion of the superintendent and board chair, but it's, you know, I, like financials, you know, if you want to get the information of financials out, or there is somebody coming to speak about the site, or something like that. But I don't think that we need it to, need them to be recorded every time, if we have Justine here as well.
Well, the discussion me and Jeff had, we just felt that the very little amount of money that it cost, that it was important because people are having conversation about not getting information, not getting information. This would just be one little more source that they'd be able to get information.
So, is that the case, Jeff, that you, you thought that this was recording all of them?
You know, I think this is inappropriate to even be discussing, because we had minutes, we had a vote, and it would be like, now, it sounds like you didn't like the results of the vote, to give the discretion. Listen, I, we listen, it's my turn. And that, we could do, if that were the case, we had a vote, and it passed, and we could do this for, if, you know, I didn't like another vote, I could bring it up time after time and say, oh, that wasn't what I meant, and, and let's vote again on it. Well, there's, there's a process for that, but I think it's very inappropriate, just because it didn't turn out the way that you wanted it, Brandy.
It's not that, it's not that.
You're rehashing your argument, and the reason that you, what you feel for, and dumb, it passed, move on.
It passed five to two.
If you want to reconsider, it doesn't matter, it passed, okay? We've got, it could be, you know, three to, whatever, three to two, whatever, it doesn't matter, it passed. I think it's very inappropriate, and if that's the case, then every one of us that voted on a not prevailing side or a prevailing side, that didn't like the result, we could bring it up time and time again, and that's, that's just not what you do.
I don't know.
Yeah, me, how about me and Jeff have a conversation about this again, or?
But, so, to answer your first question, I, I, well.
It was my motion, so I'll make sure it's correct. Does.
I guess, excuse me, but how would you suggest amending this to properly reflect the intent of your motion?
No, no, let me address that real quick. So, I, I think what Brandy is getting at is, we're not currently doing necessarily what, what your intent of the motion was. That, that's your gripe. And Bill and I did talk about it, and I, I'm not in favor of recording study sessions, ever. I, I think it's unnecessary, especially if we have here, but, but right now, at this point in time, if we're talking about some of the things that we're talking about, and Bill and I did talk about, I mean, every, and we talked about before in the, earlier in the study session, I mean, every chance we get to put information out there on this topic, I mean, we, I think we need to capitalize on it, so. I guess for now, I, I think I would recommend that we do, I mean, when we're having study sessions, I mean, should we do it for a safety committee and stuff? No.
But, but remember, a study session is a board, is a board of the whole.
Yeah.
So, can I state something? Because I, I get what you're saying. I, I get what you're saying, Polly, too, that, you know, there's a point where we can't always rehash stuff. I think the reality is, is they're still using their discretion. Their discretion right now is just what Jeff said with the number of, of calls, and what we had just talked about of, of what people are wanting to get and hearing, that why not share the information, however, with that discretion, at any given time, they can also say, we're not going to videotape this one. I mean, so they're using their discretion right now to say, we're going to videotape because of, because of this. And, and I think that is essentially what we wanted, is them to use their discretion, make the judgment call, and right now, the judgment call as a whole is being kind of looked at as just given the, the huge referendum that we have coming up, and all the information that people are asking for and wanting and trying to get, why not just share it at this point? But I would think that that will continue to be evaluated.
I, again, it was my motion, so I just wanted to make sure it was correct, but when, before the board had come, I had asked Bill about the recordings, and he said they were going to be record, every session was going to be recorded. So, again, the discussion, I think, needs to be with the board as a whole. Where do we draw the line? Because, again, it could be athletic committee meeting, it could be a safety committee meeting, it could be, there's a lot of committee meetings, and where are we going to draw the line? That's what I'm asking.
It would be just?
If you, if you want to do that, and you want to get the information out, okay. But, again, it, it was my motion, and I want to make sure that what we're doing is what I made the motion for.
But you left it to the discretion of the board chair, and that's their discretion.
But I don't think, I would support, I don't think I would support a safety meeting being recorded, a, a ground, buildings and grounds, I don't think I would support a, all the other meetings. I think more than, right now, at this point, I think the study sessions and the regular meetings.
So, that's the point of my discussion, is as long as you are drawing those lines, and that we're clear on what we are going to record and what we're not going to record, and that doesn't mean that we're going to have an ongoing study session recording from now until the end of time, you know, while we're making these decisions, it's at your discretion. But my motion was intended to be what you think is an important meeting.
And that's just what we have.
Being that Justine is here, and we're, we're video recording too. It just seems like a duplicate of services.
I'd like to comment to that, because the minutes, the written minutes are not, does not have all the detail of discussion. It's not the same, totally not the same. And, so if you say we're doing one, we don't have to do the other, they're totally different courses. And the other part of it is, I'm not so sure that just because we're in a pre-referendum vote, that all of a sudden, this information is really important, but after that, board, board information and board study sessions aren't important? Is it only because of the referendum coming up? You know, or is all board discussion, are all, are they all important? And now, there's another difference of opinion. Some feel that committee meetings should not be recorded. I said this at the last meeting, yes, some committee meetings are very informative. You have the committee discussion, then you come to the board at a, at a regular board meeting, and you vote, all the discussion has happened. The public is not aware of, of that. And so, you know what, committee meetings, I would gladly give up my extra fifty dollars a month, and maybe you all would want to kick in part two, or we'll divide it, just, just to take this big expense of seventy-five bucks per, per meeting, and that's not going to kill us, when we spend money, all kinds of money on other things. All these trips to Alexandria, now it's on our dime. That's okay, because it's for something that people support, some people support, and, but to keep the public informed for seventy-five dollars a meeting, I don't care even if they're, every committee meeting we have, we don't have very many committee meetings other than study sessions. So, that's my two cents.
I'm just gonna say, I didn't have anyone knocking on my door or calling me for a two-hour conversation two years ago. They didn't really care of what was going on, at least I did not get those phone calls. I shouldn't say they didn't care. I don't know if they cared. I didn't get phone calls. I didn't get the emails.
This isn't important to see.
Yeah, I mean, so, but again, it's the discretion, and.
I mean, there's not.
Thank you, thank you, Bill, for clarifying.
And there's not one person in here that hasn't sat and looked at social media, and you hear the words conspiracy, you're here, you hear hiding, you hear, what are they up to? It's a bait and switch, you know? I mean, I mean, the more information these people can get themselves in tune to, that would be a, it's just better, it's better. I mean, I don't know what, I guess I don't know what information people can't find, or what information they need. I just, you know?
It was on people's willingness to seek it out, because someone wanted to seek it out and called me today.
All right.
Mr. Chair, we still need a motion on those minutes, so that they can be approved.
On nine point oh?
I move that they be approved.
On, on?
Regular meeting of March 25th.
Consent to Agenda A two, still needs to be approved, just so those minutes are approved.
Regular meeting minutes of March 25th.
So, I'll make a motion to approve.
Oh, I just did.
Okay, all right, I'm sorry, I'm just, it's been a long day for me. Say that again.
I move the regular minutes of March 25th. Be approved.
Just need a second, a motion, move on.
I'll support.
Um, I want, uh, any discussion?
I just, should I have had my mic on at five o'clock?
No, they weren't being picked up that time.
No. Any more, any more discussion on this? All in favor? I oppose? Motion carries. And now, on ten point oh, we got B, no, we got, C.
Head volleyball coach.
Head volleyball coach. Your discussion on that?
Well, I asked for it to be removed, because, first of all, we just got this at the table, and I'll make a blanket statement for, it seems like all of the hiree, hirees that we approve, we get one piece of paper. We know nothing, we don't know who.
That's one more piece of paper than the word used to get.
It's not the paper, Jeff, it's the information. And I don't feel that board members can make an informed decision on hiring somebody or not hiring somebody, when you don't know anything. Now, there's so much information, that's public information, to all the public, the board doesn't even get it when they're hiring, hiring somebody. I hope we change our procedure, that the board knows more about, about the process, and who we're hiring, what their, what their, do they have licensure, what their background is, what their qualifications are, and, and not just, and I'll say it, not just rubber snap something, we don't know how many applied for this volleyball coach, coaching position, we don't know how many were interviewed, how many were considered, why, and it's nothing about Beth Bittman, absolutely nothing about the person, I'm talking about the process that I think that, that we need to change. Whatever, what were the qualifications of other people? Is this the best? Bottom line again, we need more information before we hire, keep hiring people into this district.
Do we get that information when we hire teachers, as far as who the applicants were?
We should.
What their qualifications were?
We should.
I, I think we need to trust the people that we have two jobs for.
I surely won't.
I mean, we can't micromanage every little decision that happens around here.
That's not micromanaging, though.
Absolutely, it is.
That might be your opinion, but you know what? I hate to say it again, but when I was on the board, we got information about the people we were going to hire, and because we've made some wrong decisions, we've hired people that didn't have licenses. And if we had that information, we would know not to hire those people, and it happened not too long ago either, in a couple of business instances, whether they're, they're Schedule B people, or, or employees. And, yes, we used to get a whole bunch of information, the recommendations, the cover letter, their records from school, a copy of their license. We need to know that, and it's not, I don't think it's micromanaging. You can think it is, but I don't.
It is.
Well, that's your opinion.
So, is this, is this, Beth, she's been with the program, right?
She's one of her teachers.
She's been with the district.
Yes, but she's, okay, has she been in the coaching position at all, or is she assistant at all?
She has been a coach.
Okay.
And I will vote for Beth, but I had, my beef is with the process, and I hope we address it at some point in time. You can?
I guess, I, just to speak, I mean, I, I hire in my job, and I'm allowed to hire in my job, and my supervisor does not look at everything that I'm reviewing and choosing to hire someone, and I have my employees with me when I hire, and our board certainly does not look at it. So, I'm, I'm fine with administration making their recommendations and doing their job.
The only thing that I would recommend, like I have in the past, is just to make sure that the interviews are conducted by more than just one person, or two person, people. I think it's preferred that the interviewees, or the interviewers, there are a few of them, and I see here there were four people who conducted interviews, so as long as we are doing that, I am comfortable trusting in those we have hired to do that job.
All right.
Well, if, if anything comes to a problem in the future, then it's the board's, it's the board's liability, and so, whatever, let's move on.
Still need to make a motion on that one, too?
I'll make a motion to approve the head coach volleyball position for Beth Bittman. I will support.
Okay.
Take your pictures.
Any more discussion?
Matt can do it.
All in favor? I. Oppose? Motion carries. Eleven point oh, personnel, approve the additional hours for per professional C.
Uh, Mr. Chair, probably either last meeting or two meetings ago, we approved posting for an additional two hours a day in the Gilbert Media Center. Ms. Lynn Fores has been there, she's currently there for four hours, so it would be increasing her time, two hours per day, for a total of six hours.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I will support.
So, it's motion by Sather, support by Lotteger, to approve the additional hours for per professional C. Any discussion?
Did we have any other applicants?
No.
Any more discussion on this? All in favor? I. Oppose? Motion carries. Twelve point oh, new business. Twelve point one, resolution six eighty, appointing election judges and absentee ballot board.
Did we do B?
What's that?
Accepting the reservation, did we do B?
That was in the consent agenda.
Okay, sorry, missed that.
Go ahead, Kelly.
Resolution number six B. Appointing election judges and absentee ballot board members for the May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, school district special election, be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District, number two one five four, Evliffe Gilbert Public Schools, Minnesota, as follows. It is hereby found, determined, and declared as follows. One, the following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as judges of election for the school district special election on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, to act as such at the combined polling places listed below. The Evliffe City Auditorium at four two one Jackson Street in Evliffe, Minnesota, five five seven three four. Head election judge, Rosemary Matson, along with Heather Berea, Renee Lynseth, and Connie Monart. Gilbert City Hall, sixteen South Broadway, Gilbert, Minnesota, five five seven four one. Head election judge, Jeremy.
Limata.
Limata. Richard Sebu.
Sebuena.
Sebuena.
Yep.
Leon Shonlub, sorry, Leon. Norman Chaffee. Two, the election judges shall act as clerks of election, count the ballots cast, and submit the results to the board for canvas in the manner provided for other school district elections. Three, the following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby appointed as absentee ballot board members for the school district special election on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen, to act as such at the absentee voting location listed below, which is Evliffe Gilbert Public School, Public Schools District Office at eight zero one Jones Street, Evliffe, Minnesota, five five seven three four. And that will be Rosemary Matson and Heather Berea. Four, the following individuals, each of whom is qualified to serve as an election judge, are hereby designated to deliver absentee ballots to hospital patients and residents of health care facilities, in accordance with Minnesota Statute, section two zero three B, point one one, subdivision one, for the school district special election on May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen. Patricia Wainio.
Wainio.
Wainio, and Tucker Nelson. Upon vote being taken thereon, the following vote voted in favor thereof. I didn't need to read that.
So, we need a roll call vote, correct?
We need a motion and a second, and then you can do a roll call.
Okay, I need a motion to approve resolution, resolution six eighty.
I will make the motion to approve resolution, resolution six eighty.
Second.
Any more discussion?
I just have a question. On the absentee votes, how are those handles? Now, we'll have Rosemary and Heather, their absentee things will come into the office, and then, when will they be opened and counted, and how does that work?
They may be opened and counted seven days prior to the election, but my intention was not to do that, it was to do them on the day of the election, just because there's no need to open them prior. And those will be counted at, so I'll go to the Evliffe Auditorium, because that's when I thought the vote of this would be.
Okay, good. And then, the sub- Okay, good. And then, um, the other one, will that be a one-day thing to serve to hospital patients and residents?
Yes.
One day?
Okay.
And we don't have to have that date in the resolution?
No.
They'll just pick a day. When do you expect that that might be? I mean, will that be advertised at what day that would be, so maybe families and whatever could be there?
Um, for the health care facilities, it wouldn't typically be advertised. Um, the health care facility personnel can't take care of everything on there, and basically the judges show up to assist with the voting, and it's counted in the same manner that absentee. It has to be conducted within, whoops, within twenty days of the election. So we're looking at, you know, the, the week prior or possibly the week before.
Okay, so the facility has their procedure in place?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion on this?
Yeah, I, I have a question again, and I know we've, we've covered this, but regarding absentee or early voting. I mean, there is no distinction other than, I mean, absentee, you had to certify, you weren't, wouldn't be able to make a poll for whatever reason, and give a reason, and you can give any reason you wanted to, and they would take it. But now, there's also early voting, so you could be able to get to the poll at the regular time, but say, I wanna vote early just to get it done with.
There, it might be different for a state election, where some of the processes are different for the state elections. For our purposes, because it's a special and a standalone election, for our purposes, the early voting and the absentee are the same. If you come into absentee vote, I don't need to know whether you're gonna be available on the day of the election to vote or not. You're, you can absentee vote anytime. At the early vote, you have to fill out the absentee ballot application.
No, no, thank you. And, and, um, as far as registration, will registration be available at polls, or do you need to do that early, or?
That's state law.
Yeah, it is state law, and you have to be available at polls on election day. And if you're not registered to vote, and you're voting earlier absentee, whichever you wanna call it, you can register when you absentee vote.
Perfect, thank you.
I don't know if this is, um, venue, but I was, I was asked, um, when the notices came out in the paper, that Evol Gilbert starts at nine o'clock, but Virginia starts at seven, did we? I know we all passed it, and I just didn't even notice something like that.
Well, Virginia, Virginia was supposed to be on board with that as well, and they didn't pass the resolution to combine polling places.
No, not the combined polling places, but.
But that was part of the resolution, though.
Yeah, I know.
They didn't do it.
I know, but we, could we have chosen seven o'clock, too?
Yes.
We just didn't. Well, I just, was there a reason we chose nine o'clock?
I recommended that we did nine, because the previous special election, we did nine, and that was another experience, isn't it?
Okay.
And like I said, Virginia was supposed, was supposed to do it, too, and they didn't.
So do you have, do you have to open it at nine?
Yeah.
You have to open by ten AM.
Oh, so you can't open like seven?
At least, at least by seven, but you could go earlier.
We could have, yeah, the ten is the latest. What time do we have the voting until, again?
Eight AM.
Eight, okay.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? Can I get a roll call?
Director Schoburg?
Hi.
Director Lotteger?
Yes.
Myself. Director Sather's a yes. Director Addy?
Yes.
Director Sorkin?
Yes.
And Director Genoini and Director Johann are absent.
Motion passes five, well.
Five to zero.
Five to zero.
One, two, absent.
Okay, okay. Uh, twelve point two, discussion on extracurricular hiring procedure.
I'm not sure if we already had this discussion. Do we have this discussion, or is there something else that you wanted?
Well, it's on the agenda, but I.
I thought, because you.
I think we covered it. Yeah.
We covered it?
Okay. Uh, twelve point three was removed from the agenda. Twelve point four, discussion on vacant buildings, sale of vacant buildings.
Well, Mr. Chair, you brought this up, that we need to start having a discussion. You know, we have two separate parcels, the Manuel Arts Building and the Junior High Building that are in separate parcels, and the one we're sitting on. And they are vacant, and we could sell them at any time if the district so wanted to.
I just think it'd be, I mean, we're sitting on them, our guys are mowing the lawn. Uh, the, every day that goes by that that building is vacant would be less desirable to a potential buyer, possibly. And I think it should be, we should, uh, just to cut through the chase, we should put them up for sale and see if there's any interest in them. To be honest with you, uh.
Isn't that a big presumption that we have not had the discussion about possible uses first, and then, or, and/or sale?
But they've been, but they've been deemed, uh, they've been deemed, what do you call it, unfit for, on educational purposes.
They have been, they have been.
They've been closed for.
Closed, but not on. They were closed for.
So I guess I, I don't even know what, where the conversation would be on what our purpose would be for them. Um, I can certainly think of other purposes for community providers that I would feel beneficial for that. Um, but I think that would be hand in hand with the sale, if anyone were potentially interested in giving whatever the price. I mean, I would be more inclined to, if someone had a good reasonable community need that could be met with that. So rather than just doing a blanket, however much for this building, if someone has a plan and, um, and it's feasible, I would be interested in having a conversation on a different price for, to support that plan for the community.
I guess I would just, I mean, we are paying insurance on them, correct?
Yeah.
We're paying insurance, they are on their own parcels of land. They're not connected to our parcels. Actually, the Manuel Arts is on its own parcel. The Junior High's on its own parcel. I guess if I was, you were to sell them to anybody, or sell them to anybody in the community, I would put no build stipulation on it, by no means. You know, I mean, they could come in there and strip the building of everything, and then they don't build on it, now you got the building back.
And we don't want that.
I don't want that. I don't want you to sell it, you sell it to whoever, and, yeah, maybe it would be so desirable for the city to possibly end up with an eyesore, but by, by selling it to somebody who did nothing with it.
No, I, I'm in firm support of that. I agree with that. I'm just saying for the, for the sale price or anything like that, I, I'm more inclined, I would love to see it be repurposed, and for different community needs that I know exist out here, you know, for that to happen. And would that then, if someone comes forward, would that influence the price of the building then to, for sale to them? Yeah, no, I'm not looking at a build stipulation, and, because I'm a firm believer that, um, we're not renters, and I think it's always a questionable thing with Chicago, even though I felt strongly about the need in our community to have a daycare. I think we have to be very true and keep in our swim lane that we are educators, so.
And I just, I mean, to me, it's my opinion, I see no reason we should hang on to those buildings.
Well, again, again, should we not, as a board, it's been how many years since that hearing to close them for educational purposes? Now, we've got new board members, we've got a new situation, we've got the referendum coming up on the fourteenth, so we're putting all kinds of other things on hold. And why not this for the same reason? But again, my, my main point is that we have not even discussed if there are possible uses by the school district itself for those buildings. And I know that there have been suggestions of how our school district could use one or, one or more of those buildings. One for sure that I know. And so this is putting the cart before the horse.
If you, twelve point four, this is a discussion.
I know, I know, I know, I'm just saying, to discuss this, I mean.
Don't, don't decisions are being made.
No, I know, but I'm saying that discussion about even selling it should come after we've investigated possible uses for them ourselves.
Um, if, if people are struggling with the, the cost of our, the collaboration discussions and the cost of that, if there is not money to be, um, going into those two buildings, the old Junior High and Manuel Arts Building, that's going to be additional money that'll have to come from the taxpayers, and we won't have I triple R B money or collaboration funds to support that, and it will impact the taxpayers and how much they are paying as well.
I guess, I mean, I, I don't, I can't, I can't fathom what I could possibly see. And I say I, because I, I mean, others might have a better imagination, but I can't possibly fathom what we would use for educational purposes when we have how much existing space over and above what we need in our current buildings that we're using. And we're having issues within our buildings of being able to keep up with maintenance and everything else. That I, I can't even imagine why we would do that, and then having the conversation of whether, you know, it's fiscally responsible to, you know, keep certain teaching staff and things like that, but yet I'm gonna utilize buildings for education purposes that we don't need the space for.
Well, I, I'm saying that's part of the discussion we need.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying, I, I just said I can't fathom.
That's fine, I mean, that's, that's your.
But if other people, I mean.
I think it's a good discussion to have. I don't think we're ready to do anything with that.
No, but it's, you know, as I drive through the neighborhood, or I drive by here, and I look at them, I mean, it's, don't get me wrong, it's a beautiful building. It probably has lots of potential, okay? Something I wouldn't take on, way too big for me, but if I, you know, you look at it, you just hate to see the building getting such disrepair that nobody wants it, now we're forced to tear it down. You know what I'm saying, I mean.
But he says it's gonna have to be made sooner or later.
Yes, yes. I mean, there was money to demolish, wasn't there at one time? If I remember right.
It was part of the action, but you.
All right.
Gone now.
Okay. Any more discussion on this? Or move on? Okay. Twelve point five, approve the second meeting in April for April, for April twenty ninth.
Um, Mr. Chair, or, you know, we, obviously the board passes the second, fourth Monday, but the fourth Mon, no, that's not right. The fourth Monday is on holiday this year. And just wondering if the board, they, the last two Aprils, we haven't had a second April meeting, but I mean, we probably should this year. I'm just wondering if you wanna switch that over to the following Monday? I know that a couple of members have said they won't be here, so.
I likely would not be able to be here if it's on the twenty ninth. If there was a different day, I know I've mentioned it to you, Jeff, that I, I most likely won't be here on the twenty ninth. And you had said that Tuesday you wouldn't be available.
I'm not available on that Tuesday, which you don't need me to have a board.
Could, could, could that Wednesday, May first, be a possibility instead? Because you said Wednesday, May first, because I know you said that there was another board member, too, that.
Uh, Director Johann can't be there.
But it, I mean, is it, I mean, it's, we certainly can have a meeting.
Well, that's what I'm asking, you don't have to.
On the, the twenty second?
The, the.
I know, and I, on November seventh or whatever, I went through my calendar and marked off the second and fourth of, of every month. Second, fourth Monday of every month, too. And sometimes you can't make it.
I, I have no problem with meeting on that day.
Which day?
The twenty second.
I will not be here that day.
The twenty ninth, he said, right?
The fourth Monday is the twenty second.
Why not just keep it on the twenty second, though, is what I was saying.
And, yeah. But isn't there, isn't there something that we aren't allowed to have a board meeting on?
No, just on the election.
A holiday, as you can.
One day is a holiday.
It's not a holiday.
One is another holiday.
We have an offer, yeah, we just have it offered this, for a school, roughly.
Not, you're saying it is a holiday?
It is a school holiday, I mean, it's a holiday for the school.
For the school, yeah, but it's.
Yes, well.
I'm fine with the twenty second or the twenty ninth, or I could do the first.
I'm good with all three of those myself.
I'm good with all.
I think the first is just way too long, um, you know, to take, to take formal action on some things. So we don't get caught in a situation where we cut checks or we hire people after or before we.
Well, what I, what I was looking at is, I mean, if you do the twenty ninth, then it's a full two weeks before the next meeting in May. And like I said, if you wanna do, I will not be here on the twenty second.
How about the twenty fourth? I mean, just the.
I can do the twenty fourth.
I can do the twenty fourth.
I can do the twenty fourth.
It works for me.
I would prefer the twenty fourth.
So Wednesday, the twenty fourth.
That work for you?
Probably.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Just need a motion on that.
Okay.
Is that, is that considered a special board meeting or a regular one rearranged?
It's a regular one, I agree.
I'd make a motion to move our regular board meeting scheduled for Monday, April twenty second, to Monday, to Wednesday, April twenty fourth at six P M.
I will support.
Oh, so motion by Schoburg, uh, second by Lotteger. Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Meeting will be on Wednesday, the twenty fourth, at six o'clock in the boardroom. Uh, thirteen point, thirteen point oh, old business, there is none. Fourteen point oh, administrative report and information.
All right, here we go. I gave you the, the enrollment report earlier tonight. There's eight eighty right now. Little bit of a listening session, so we, we had three last week. We were in Gilbert, Ebla, and Virginia, nine, twelve, and six. We had over two hundred people attend in, in the three sessions. Very good questions and dialogue. Um, we've got a lot of good questions out that we're looking to answer for folks. Were, the big one was the land. We're gonna work with the cities on getting a letter of intent on, on land issues. And the other one is curriculum, which we're, we're trying to put something together so folks have an example of what it will look like. It's not something that we can put together right now in full, but we can give you an idea of what it looks like, so.
Speech, um, last, this past Saturday was the section speech eight for seventy in Duluth at Marshall School. And the top three go to state in each category, and there's thirteen categories. And we, Evol Gilbert had somebody representing them in the top three in nine of the thirteen categories. So there are only four categories that we weren't representing to go on to state. And there were twelve students. The first category was creative expression, second place Veronica Lasar. Discussion, we had a second place with Kaylee Grohec, and a third place with Ashley Fulpus. Extemporaneous reading, we had a second place Shayna Darman and Kristen Rothenberger. Extempor, extemporaneous speaking, second place J.C. Zabbi. Great speeches, we have Quinn Newich first place, and Amara Carey with second place. And formative speaking, Hannah Greenwich with first place. And original oratory, Brennan Newich. Serious interpretation drama, second place Greta Van Orsdale. And serious interpretation cruise was second place Danica Durkinger. So congratulations to all of those students, and Mr. Gritsmacher and Mr. Chad, these two folks. And good luck to them on Friday in Wayzetta.
Good job, Paul.
I bet you guys are all jealous that I get to go to a state speech meeting on Friday, too.
Oh, boy.
They've been really well all year long, too.
Honor roll, uh, seventh grade exemplary, four point oh GPA for third quarter, Eleanor Bjorgi, Isaac Lynn Porres, Mia Stark, and Lucy Brandt. Moving on to the A honor roll for seventh grade. It's like a roll call, but.
My best, Corbin Anderson, Marissa Anderson, Anna Bladett, Kyle Bladett, Daisy Borden, Bodie George, Gunner George, Alyssa Grohec, Maxwell Gritsmacher, Alex Gunderson, Olivia Hammond, Cyrus Johnson, Corinne Canary, Motilia Lorich, Julia Linseth, Ian Mikulich, Jayden Peglow, Jacob Rossford, Terran Swan, Adrianne Thompson, Alec Troutwine, Justin Winkler, Miley Young, and Elissa Ziegler. Congratulations to them. Moving on to the eighth grade exemplary, four point oh honor roll, Jake Pradach, Jared Delitch, Lydia Delitch, Anna Hanenin, Amanda Johnson, Maggie Coscola, Abigail Rousch, and Caitlin Terrell. Eighth grade A honor roll, GPA three point six to three point nine nine, Joshua Blotnick, Taylor Haryu, Ava Crowjer, Jayden Lang, Delaney Mackey, Morgan Marks, Connor Metshiner, Carter Mavick, Brennan Newich, Rebecca Mooster, Blair Noyes, Elliotto, Kendra Bozzati, Nathan Spearing, Chantel Tejada, Della Cruz, and Hannah Weston.
Ninth grade exemplary honor roll, Will Bittman, John Schultzberg, Abby Sundich. The A honor roll, Eli Bull.
The A honor roll, Eli Bull, Carson Intihar, Lauren Lotteger, Drew Nelson, Carter Orent, Brooke Theon, Nick Troutwine, Emma Ziegler. Tenth grade exemplary honor roll, Amara Carey, Elizabeth Jankala, Holly Kutsi, Maggie Landware, Kirsten Rothenberger, Jacob Sickel, Andrew Terrell, Amelia Wagner. A honor roll, Josh Creer Overstar, Cooper Grahec, Jemmy Sherwick Chach, Addison Johnson, Kayden Krompetich, Anna Mills, Natalie Petron, Haley Schreiber, Rebecca Shepherd, Kayla Wainenpa, Amara Wilcox, Rachel Woods, Jovan Zimmerman. Eleventh grade exemplary honor roll, Carly George, Thea Kokowski, Zach Linseth, Ashley Piank. The A honor roll, Molly Albrecht, Robbie Erickson, Carla Fandino, Michaela Kibby, Elizabeth Stanaway. And our seniors exemplary honor roll, Lauren Day, Justine Jam, Robbie Licari, Caleb Peterson. And A honor roll, Alex Andrews, Luca Bentley, Cheyenne Bever, Kaylee Grahec, Cody Intihar, Elena Kraus, Rose Marie Kutsi, Julia Licari, Quinn Muich, Emily Rennie, and Haley Rucker. Congratulations to all those students making the honor roll.
Great. They're gonna take a little time off from this, and I'm gonna invite Jason Ness up. You know, sort of, he's been very impatient these last nights. He's got a few things to talk about with.
Yeah, just to update the board, I appreciate an update on some of the last projects that I brought up and my heads up on what's on my plate and not being super nice paper, including me. If you may recall, not too long ago, we purchased a bunch of battery backup, uninterruptible power supplies. Most of those are installed. There had to be some additional electrical work. And there are two more to finish install. One of them will be done tomorrow morning before classes start, and the other will have to schedule for a weekend. It's our main server step. We've organized a district tech committee. We had a meeting last week. We hadn't had a meeting since the sixteen seventeen school year, and it's something that I felt personally was sorely missed. I don't have a history in education as far as a teacher goes, so I need to hear more from the teachers about how they want to use technology and what resources they should have available. It was a decent attended meeting for being kind of a short notice. There was, other than myself, two, three, four, six, seven people attended, six people attended. We appointed officers and just a chair, vice chair, and secretary. And then just kind of brainstormed some ideas of what we want to have on a fuller agenda in our first real full meeting. And we, I wanted to organize this now and get the process and procedure, kind of, the structure down, so that we could start in and fall right away early, rather than letting things slip us by until April again. And then, part of that, the next meeting, the meeting on May first, will be the password policy that I had first brought to the board not too long ago in February. They have copies of it. Everybody who attended the meeting has copies of it, and I'm hoping to get their input and formalize that as something that we can put into place over the summer. And then the last update I have is the Windows Seven and Windows Server two thousand and eight end of life. Both those operating systems are end of life in January twenty twenty. And we have three servers that are in Server two thousand and eight R two and over two hundred PCs that are in current use that are Windows Seven. Now, I don't have any, unfortunately, I don't have any hard numbers as far as cost, but I'm trying to come up with vendors. Two plans. Basically, what's the plan if we just upgrade them from Windows Seven to Windows Ten to keep all the hardware the same? That's obviously going to be the cheapest plan, but the hardware was purchased in twenty twelve, so it's not like it's gonna last us forever. And then a plan for some strategic replacement, excuse me, some strategic replacement. And we had the discussion about how many computer labs each school feels like they need. And so that is just coming around the bend. As soon as I get some hard numbers, I can tell you, but it looks like just a very, very rough estimate. If we just upgraded everything that we are using in place, we're looking at, at an estimate of seventy dollars per upgrade, and I'm not entirely certain that that number is correct, because there's different contracts that we could buy Microsoft licenses at, but that's thirteen thousand dollars. And then if you look at new PCs, somewhere around six or seven hundred dollars, you know, you've got a hundred, twelve, hundred, thirty thousand dollars. So as soon as I get some concrete numbers for those and a good plan, I will be presenting that to the board. And then this.
Does that include, because we went through and determined that we didn't need as many computer labs as we currently have, because all the kids have iPhones. Does your two hundred units include the ones that we're not going to use anymore?
We cut back on the computer count in S H one twenty-three down the hallway here, based on plans and discussions with Mrs. Williams. The junior high labs are going to remain the same in numbers, so we're not actually cutting back too many of those PCs. There was some discussion at the board, at the committee meeting, the district technology committee meeting that we held last week. That's the current plan. So when we replace the staff laptops or staff computers with laptops, there was a large number of those that didn't get reused elsewhere. So in general, this is cutting back, you know, we're not gonna upgrade computers that have been sitting on a shelf. Those ones we'll keep for parts if we maintain some of this old stock. So hopefully, I tried to be as judicious as I could in determining, you know, which rooms will need computers in. And then the last part, the server part, I've got very rough estimates of anywhere between eight and a half to maybe nine and a half, ten thousand dollars per server. There is one server in Hibbing, I'm sorry, Evelyn, one server in Gilbert right now that are host, virtual host, and then you can spin up virtual servers or computers to serve different functions. So the two physical boxes would be anywhere from eight and a half to ten thousand apiece. Again, I'll try to get some, some more concrete numbers for the next meeting, and I'm also looking to see if, what kind of cheaper, older models or refurbs we might get, you know, keeping in mind, you know, how the vote goes in May. So I hope to be able to provide a much more concrete and thorough report soon, but I just want to give you the heads up that that's on my plate. It's not really advisable to run operating systems past end of life, because people start, they start saving up the vulnerabilities until the day comes when Microsoft stops patching the security, and then they'll exploit those vulnerabilities. So thank you to the board and Mr. Care for your time. I can ask any questions, yeah?
Jason, depending upon what happens in May with the referendum bowl, doesn't Virginia have Apple system?
Yeah.
So that's, we have.
We have to reconsider that.
And that's part of it. Part of it is I want to try to come up with a more temporary plan to get us through the three years, and that's where I would look at an older model server or maybe a refurbished one. One I wouldn't expect to last eight years, but maybe one that we could get by cheaper for three years until the academy takes place, if that gets accepted, voted on. So I'm trying to do my due diligence as best as I can to provide a variety of plans for everybody.
Is there any special funding for this type of equipment, for computers and educational equipment?
There probably is. Unfortunately, I'm not all that experienced in finding grants and researching grants and things like that.
Not grants, but I'm thinking state money. Is there any special category of money for this?
It comes out of capital when we do that, our capital.
Okay. Does that roll into this, these?
It's not in the tenure, nor is the capital. It's a little different. That's also a, a per pupil amount that's allocated just for like equipment and things like that.
Okay, so we have special funding for that, and it's under that category, for equipment, and?
That's where we buy our desks or chairs.
Okay, so that's.
Usually ends up being about, we get about two hundred thousand a year, a little under.
Okay, so that's a pot that can be looked at for those needs.
We have been, you know, most of our upgrades that we've done since Jason has come here, we've done through E-rate.
Yeah, yeah.
All of our closets, we've, all those, we've been just patient, get a little bit every year, so. And I think we might, do we have a little bit left over there?
The last bit of E-rate money, I've got, I'm in the process of, for expanding our wireless access. That's something, once I finalize, I'll also be bringing to the board for your information approval. And then this is the fifth year of the current five-year E-rate plan. So when I design that wireless access point, I try to do it in a way that I could get what we need and spend as much of the available money to us as possible. And I haven't personally heard if the E-rate plan's gonna be renewed for a few years, or I don't know where that's at, so.
Is it?
Though that wireless access plan, and once I get my ducks in ear and am able to present that to you, would represent my best effort to spend whatever remaining E-rate money, which is refunded to us at a rate of seventy percent.
Do we have any levy authority for things like this, some capital without voter approval? There's something.
There used to be.
And for health and safety, I'm just thinking, if we use some money, some other pots or some other special funds that we're allowed to, that would, that would free up some health and safety money. You know, money is fungible. If you can free it up here, you can use it somewhere else. And I'm just thinking along those lines, too. What about EIP? We get some money for equipment from EIP?
We have twice. This year is not, we're not going to, for sure.
Are no districts getting it this year? Okay, none this year. I know we got sixteen.
Sixty seven.
Yeah, okay. And so that can help. Maybe for next year and the subsequent years, we could get some EIP.
Yeah, they're currently not funded. They're looking for, they're looking for funding. They don't have any, I don't, so nobody's getting anything from them.
Okay, so nothing in the near future?
The last time they had, they had the collaboration account for two million dollars, and they.
I thought they were getting two million every year, but they have to be.
They have to do it every year.
Okay, so that's not a thing that.
Do you have one addition I forgot to mention, is that depending on how the Mevo goes, I know I haven't been doing as good of a job as seeking out to figure out an ongoing replacement plan. The majority of the computers, I understand, were purchased by C W in twenty twelve as a one big lump thing. And then, credit to Mr. Perossen, he's been doing a lot of work to keep them, when hardware dies on one, to Frankenstein them together and with other parts' computers and keep things running. So if, it looks like need be, I'm going to try to be coming up with a more responsible and every year plan to replace some of the fleet, so it's not lump sum every five or six or eight years, because that's just, it's too hard to swallow as one big pill. We can break it up over a few years.
Did that matrix or some of that information you and I talked about, did that, would that help with that, that plan and, you know?
That would help provide a structure for, for a plan. That was more towards, it was geared towards the, you know, security side of things, but I did like how it breaks down a variety of different potential goals and, you know, from the bare minimum to moderately acceptable to if you had all the money in the world, this would be the exemplary example. But, so I'm trying to somewhat mimic that by providing, I'll try to provide a few different options for bare metal upgrades to replacement and everything I can think of feasibly in between.
Just so you don't have to reinvent the wheel or set up your own spreadsheet or something. I wondered if that was helpful.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, I'll be quick here. In Franklin, we got, I mentioned earlier tonight, we're gonna round up on May second. And then I just wanted to mention, yesterday, we had Phil Goldfinger Beaver, bleh, bleh. No, I got your guys.
Yeah.
Beaver Bingo. Great turnoff. I've been in there for probably a dozen years, and that might have been the best one I've seen in L A, over thirteen thousand out. And then we're normally only get sixty seven.
Yeah, that's the highest I've ever heard of.
Nice, man. And just trying to keep you up to date on what we do on Wednesday. So this Wednesday, we're, we're looking at social studies materials. I got McGraw-Hill coming in, and they're not telling me that we're buying any. We're just, we haven't, elementary hasn't gotten into social studies for a while, so we're just looking at options.
On that, Jeff, is that part of our curriculum review cycle?
Um, way past it. Elementary got passed up the last time social studies renewed.
What other areas are in this year? Usually have three, three a year or two a year?
Um, this year, actually, it's, we're kind of caught up there, actually. We're, that's why we're looking at, we didn't, last time, for whatever reason, they didn't do elementary, early elementary science, and they didn't do social studies. But we're caught up with math, reading, history, and.
What did we do last year? Which one, which one did we review last year?
Computers, technology. All right, go ahead, guys.
Just a quick update on what I've been working on for early release activities. Four bullet points here. Ongoing work with student-centered learning and teacher best practices. We've been doing some horizontal and vertical alignment activities. Horizontal, more talking within.
Yeah, with the horizontal, we're, the social studies department wanted to meet with the English department and see where they were overlapping or how they can help each other teach both of those. We wanted to move on to the science and math and have them, but we didn't want to throw too much at them. The English and the history still wanted to meet together, so that's the horizontal alignment. And then the vertical is just going like seventh and grade teacher would be meeting with the sixth grade teacher in math, science, and English. So we've done a little bit of the math vertical alignment.
And also, we're working on standards-based learning targets and success criteria implementation. Some of our trainings that we've gone through the last couple of years are ongoing, and we're focusing on that. Also, just developing teacher-driven plans, looking towards the future staff development activities. We'll be working with that, so.
Got a question.
Yes.
How are these activities, early release activities determined, since we don't have a staff development and district advisory committee?
They're teacher-driven, and we do have a leadership team that meets weekly to discuss the staff development activities, so.
How was that team developed?
How was that team developed? We've asked, we have volunteer bases.
Typically volunteers.
Asked for volunteers.
Yeah.
Yep.
See who shows up.
Moving on, some eighth graders made the cut for responsibility a couple of weeks ago. Jared Delitch, Rebecca Mooster, Eliato, congratulations to them and their families. Also, some fifth graders made the cut for citizenship this last Thursday. Rory Scuffy, Sophie Riley, and Bryn Rosinka, congratulations to them. And I'm running out of ties. Moving on, well-known Minnesota and nationally recognized book author Mary Casanova came to speak today to our fifth graders. She's the author of One Dog Canoe and many other children's books. We want to thank her for coming and talking to our fifth graders today. They had a lot of fun. And then we also had some sixth grade students entered into the Americanism Essay Contest, test sponsored by the Evelyn Elks Lodge. And congratulations goes out to three of the students who received twenty-five dollar checks in recognition. Nola Kuyakowski, Nolan Osepik, and Brighton Teacher. Our sixth grade teachers also received a donation of a hundred and fifty dollars for classroom supplies, so we want to thank Evelyn Elks Lodge.
I want to give thanks to Ms. Larson for organizing another successful blood drive on Monday, April first, and give thanks to everybody who donated blood. And then also to give thanks to Mr. Pillsbury, our counselor, for doing the ACT, proctoring that and getting it all set up, and the teachers that helped proctor that, Mr. Strasser and Mr. Burritt and Mrs. Diedrich. It went very, was successful without any glitches. And then the chamber recital, it was the first annual one on Tuesday, April second. It was in the media center. We have a picture of the jazz band performing. And then Mrs. Forsman has Isaiah Erickson also performing in that picture.
So we have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, moving on to fifteen point board member topics. We'll start with you, Paul.
Okay. I was wondering how meet and confer is coming along, the date?
I have, I have asked a few times. We don't have anything to meet and confer about.
The, the teachers' union said they didn't have any.
We have not gotten a response yet, so I take that, you know, as a topic.
Although, what about board member issues? Not issues, I don't mean issues in a negative way, but board member topics? Let me confirm, I have a couple of my own ideas. Does anybody else have any that they would wish to talk about? Or be thinking about?
I mean, if we have issues, they can, they'll meet with us. We just haven't had it. We just haven't had it.
Okay, well, I can, I can give you mine and then you could relay them, but I mean, okay.
But meet and confers, aren't those typically driven by the bargaining units?
No, it's a state law. It's a law that districts have to offer them.
Yes, but if we, I mean, this is like, we're saying, we want to meet and confer as opposed to them coming to us and saying.
It works both ways.
We want issues.
It works both ways. Because there, administrations and boards have things, too, that they might want to discuss. I mean, it's, it's not a, it's not this, it's a try and.
But the bargaining units aren't compelled to meet with us. We're compelled to meet with them.
To offer.
Should they request?
No, not if they request. We, we have to offer it to them.
It has, it has been offered.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. I was wondering about when I, we discussed that investment and insurance outfit, National something or other, have they been contacted and?
No, I was a little busy last week, so I'll, I'll get to it tomorrow.
Okay, I'll just keep it on the radar.
Yep.
And then the, I also threw out there some MSBA presentation or training or something, staff development and curriculum advisory committees?
Yep, we do have that set up.
You have that set up?
Yeah, Susan Burris will be coming from MDE to talk about that on May 20th at.
Good.
I think it's 5:00 o'clock, she'll be.
Five, five to six.
If you have a meeting or at the service cooperative, of course, if you got, they will say.
Are you going to consider that a, just informational session or a special meeting or a work session?
We call them study sessions.
Study session? Okay, so that, and then, you know, anybody isn't, if it's a study session, it's a public meeting, so other groups don't have to be invited, that would be involved, right? Okay, that's.
And what's that for specifically, again?
She's going to come talk to us about the development, staff development.
And the curriculum advisor.
I would suggest that we have a policy committee meeting and maybe revisit our discipline and bullying policies and anything else related to that.
Haven't we previously done the, done the reviews of those policies, like on a rotating basis?
We, I mean, after the MSB comes up with recommendations for changes, there aren't any left.
But I don't know if we ever, I think the intention was to try to establish a good rotation and regular meetings, and I don't think, I think we started hitting it really good and then got busy with other things, so.
We're pretty good on upgrade now.
Are we?
We got two that I had on, but I didn't get to talk to the study session.
Well, just in lieu of the last meeting or so, when we had some resolutions about some issues, that may, you know, and then maybe, you know.
I don't think those policy issues.
Well, maybe, we'll look on the back and see the last time it's been reviewed and maybe, the only other thing is, I understand that we used to have zip slips, and I don't know, that's part of the discussion, too. Did they go by the wayside? Did, did, you know, should we rethink that with the help with discipline and let's just talk about discipline?
Sorry, didn't intend to. We've had some discussion on, on that, about the zip slips and things, and that's kind of where the discussion came about having a, you know, detention supervisor. So that was part of that whole discussion and the zip slips.
The physical zip slips went away, but we're using power school to track that stuff, no, because parents can see, parent lives in the power school, they can see that stuff, no, as well as all the other teachers that are involved in the.
But weren't the zip slips kind of like a procedural discipline thing? So how does power school replace a zip slip?
It's the same way. I mean, you're basically filling out a zip slip online.
Oh, so we still have a concept of zip slips, like discipline slips or something?
Yeah, it's just you have to fill out a form.
Oh, I didn't, that's what I was talking about. I thought we did away with that, you know, discipline procedure, okay.
I think, like the discipline part in power school, I don't know if a lot of parents know about that. I don't know if that's something that we can send out some information about, too, because I just happened to come upon it when I was in power school looking at grades.
I was under the impression it gave you an order.
Well, luckily, my kids haven't had that, but.
The notifications are generated by me as the principal and Ms. Williams.
I take that back. If they do get a detention, I think we get an email.
Yes.
On that.
Yes.
But I, when something happens in the school, when there's a behavioral concern, I think the zip slips, I think maybe this is what Polly's getting at, is the zip slip resulted in a consequence like that day? Is that still happening? Like, are they?
That part of it hasn't changed. I mean, like I said, I mean, it's basically a, it's a virtual zip slip in the power school. I mean, you still, you fill, you fill out.
The consequence is still happening, is what I'm asking.
Yes.
It should be.
Okay.
Well, anyway, I'd still suggest that we might want to consider, discuss it another time to revisit those policies, see that they're, you know, that bullying is always a big issue. How are we coming with security locks? And you had mentioned that it was from some grant money, and I was wondering what grant money that came from, some of that money.
Yeah, that was, it was still part of that. I tripped on that 2.1 million we got several years ago, we're just trying to finish that off. Jason, where are we at with the final installation on that?
The, we approved with the vendor GoKilis for the return of point-to-point, their subcontractor installers, and I have not yet heard any itinerary for their return to finish installing the locks that we have and giving us the control program and training.
It hasn't been the greatest experience in a while.
So how secure are we at this point?
The external doors are all in place and locking and setting. Classroom doors and office doors interior, we've been manually programming on a one-to-one basis, which will keep the doors locked. But it's not essentially controlled final, final installation.
Then just one more thing. We need to revisit again the administrative structure, including theme of students, and maybe a personnel committee meeting? Okay? That's all I have.
Well, me, I just attended those meetings for the listening sessions, that was about it.
It's good to sit, good to have.
It was interesting. Good, 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 good dialogue came out of it. That's all I have to say.
Thanks, rewind. So I was not able to make it. So I don't really have.
I blew your ear out of bingo yesterday.
My mother, bless her heart, chose the front and center table right in front of the speaker, right when I sat before they even spoke, I'm like, seriously? And it was, oh, and then way people in the back are like, you can't hear, I'm like, oh, like, seriously, I'd give anything to go back there. Bingo was wonderful. That was wonderful, and I, bingo his pen. It was my first time sitting down and playing in like eight years, so that was kind of a neat experience.
Because you've always been involved.
Because I've always been involved with it, yep.
That was so frustrating because there, and I'm going to kick Brandy's under here, I shouldn't have been talking, but I bought like $40 of tickets for those, my tickets, and I put them in there, and then I draw the thing out and it's Brandy Lotte. I'm like, you got it.
And she put a dollar in there?
She put a buck in there.
Come on now, they spend more money than that. But it was so embarrassing because I asked my sister-in-law, you know, do you need to put your name on the back or do you just, what? She's like, no, you don't need to put your name on the back. I'm like, well, I'm going to put my name on the back.
Five hundred tickets and I put one on that's got a name on it.
And she found it on the floor, actually.
A little O C, I guess, about that, but it was a little embarrassing, I must say. Um, is it my turn? Okay, so I did go to a listening session. I went to the one in Gilbert, and I thought it was great as well. The, the best part about it was obviously the getting accurate information out was great, but also just the respect people had for each other's differing opinions. I mean, there, when I was in Gilbert, there wasn't anybody getting angry about anything. It was, it was constructive, you know, dialogue, and I really appreciated that. Because again, we're trying to get the information out, and if we know people's concerns, we can address those concerns, and I thought it was, it was great. And I would have gone to the next night session, but I had a sick kid, so I wasn't able to. And then the following night, I had gone to the Iron Range Youth in Action. That was my first meeting that I attended for the board, which that, too, was great. It sounds like they're doing a lot around the Iron Range and down in the Duluth area, you know, soup kitchens and things like that. I would like to know more about what we do with Iron Range Youth in Action and who here is, who runs that, who is in charge of.
Tim Strasser.
Tim Strasser?
Yeah.
Because that, I, I would be interested in hearing from him a little bit more about what, what they're doing, because there, there seem to be a lot of great opportunities for kids getting out into the community and doing community service and volunteer stuff, and just sounded like some great opportunities, so I was very happy to be a part of that. And Jeff already stole my thunder and said about the PTA bingo and how I was a big winner.
You won something else, too, didn't you?
I did.
What else was it?
I won, I won adult, the mindfulness coloring books and stuff, so.
Oh, I thought you won the merge's liquor one.
No. No, I did not. But I was a big winner. It was a little embarrassing that my name was on the back of those tickets.
And you were completely called out on it.
Yeah, I was.
The one with the name on the back.
Not just one time, thank you, Jeff, but twice.
You got you twice.
Yeah.
You're welcome.
That's it?
Thanks, Brandy, and I definitely agree. I did have a chance to attend the session here last Wednesday evening, and there was good dialogue, certainly different viewpoints out there. But one thing, and to reiterate, I guess, there does seem to be some confusion on what we're voting on.
Right.
And what we're voting on is our elementary schools for the respective districts and a joint academy, seven to 12 academy, that will be operated by both districts through a joint powers agreement that would be negotiated after the vote. And this isn't any discussion right now, it isn't about consolidation. Any consolidation that may happen, which would be a logical step at some point, would be something that I fully would expect would go to the voters, just like the consolidation of the Elkhurst Gilbert districts did. And.
What has to, it would have to. Consolidated vote has to go to the voters.
It doesn't have to.
What?
Boards can consolidate.
Really? Did a lot change?
But that doesn't mean you should.
Yeah. So you don't have.
You don't have to go.
Like I say, I fully expect that that would go to the voters, whether it has or not, I don't know.
It should. You guys would decide.
Okay.
Thanks, Matt.
16.0 adjournment. Can I get a motion adjourned?
I will make the motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lotte, second by Schiller. This meeting is adjourned.